Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the roll, please?
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Thon.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. Before we go into number five, which is questions and comments and announcements, as I stated in the work session, tonight, we're going to have a brief discussion on the wearing of masks. As you could tell, we've purchased these plexiglass shields that keep us separated from one another. The purpose of that was to give the aldermen the individual choice as to whether or not they wore their mask during the meeting, or if they didn't, that was their choice. We've had concern expressed to us by two of our aldermen who would like to see all of us wear all of our masks all night long, even when we're speaking. And I told both those aldermen via email that we would be discussing this publicly and arriving at a consensus decision tonight. So I'd like to know your thoughts on it as a council. Alderman Thon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief discussion. I sent an email to the mayor and to the council requesting that the city council be required to wear masks, partly because just personal experience. I live with someone that has underlying health issues, and I think masks will be able to protect not only my family, but your family as well. So my request is to have our aldermen and our city council to wear masks throughout the meeting. I'm not sure for how long of duration of when we'll cut it off, but I think it's important for us to be able to respect each other and respect each other's requests, partly because the whole new discussion of our kids going back to school, and we're requiring our kids to wear face shields and masks throughout their day at school, and the teachers to wear masks throughout the day at school. So it's important for us to set the tone as leaders, leaders in the community, to be able to step up to the plate and say, we support our kids, we support our teachers, we support each other's values and respect each other's personal decisions to be able to wear face masks to protect our loved ones. And I'm just asking for the city council to just, you know, set aside, you know, the bipartisan issues and, you know, and look at it as a personal issue for me to say, I'm trying to protect a family member and protect those in the audience. If we require these guys to wear masks throughout the session, we should wear them too. That's all I'm asking. So, you know, so, you know, this thing is constantly evolving from day to day. You know, we might be wearing, you know, full body coverings, who knows? But this thing keeps evolving, so we have to keep implementing new strategies and approaches to approach this, this, this thing called coronavirus. So I'm just asking for the city council to consider that of wearing face masks throughout the duration of our sessions and committees and our committees, committee meetings too as well. So, and I asked Alderman Tom Clistic to join me in those efforts, and he said, he said, okay.
Yeah, I'll make it pretty straightforward. I have two residents that passed away from COVID. One resident was 83 years old. The husband is now widowed. Other neighbor, Joyce LeBlanc, is a nurse at UIC Emergency Care, and she caught COVID. She passed away. She leaves behind two sons that I personally promised that I will wear a mask at every meeting, and it's one of the reasons I brought it up. Right now, there are two kids at Hinsdale South that's missing a parent. And it's my duty as an elected official to be a leader, to represent those marked community. And as mayor knows, he's a principal that he knows what leadership's about. He knows that it's important to lead by example. As a principal, you're always teaching kids, teaching students the importance of following directions, following what is right and what is right in science. And then Lester Vaughn and I, we believe we should be wearing a mask every time we're up here. I mean, I could start yelling and screaming. Alderman Shower could be yelling. Next thing you know, it falls on the other side. On a personal level, I have a mom that's battling cancer. I got a daughter that has, you know, breathing issues, asthma. And so why would I risk that, my residents, my family? Just because we can't take two seconds to wear a mask. It's just nonsense. So I'm voting for this, and I encourage the rest of the council to vote for it, that we continue wearing it till vaccine is found and until we have won this battle against COVID-19.
Anyone else? Alderman Belzak?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of it also. I think it sets a good example.
I'm sorry, Tom.
I can't speak well, but I'd be in favor of it. I think it sets a good example for everyone that watches it on TV, and it doesn't hurt not to have it on.
Mary?
I respect people's wishes. I'm a mask wearer. I have family members that are not healthy in my own home, elderly parents. My only concern with nonstop use of the mask is the, once we're speaking, the ability for our audience to hear us clearly and be communicating our points across. When you see press conferences held by our governor and by the mayor of Chicago, they do remove the mask when they're at the podium to speak. I feel like we have that extra layer of protection with the plexiglass. So that's my only concern. Stair, I'm sorry, not staircase.
Thanks.
The communications people, the survey we did specifically showed that we have audio issues when our meetings are being broadcast. And I think the mask is only gonna confuse people more in terms of getting our point across. I mean, I do project very well. I'm on top of the microphone right now, but that's my only concern, is making sure our residents hear what we're saying and what we're discussing. And the plexiglass gives us that extra layer so that we can remove the masks for a short period of time when we're speaking. I have a kid returning to high school at Hinsdale South. It is not, to my knowledge, that they plan to have plexiglasses in the room. That's why the students will be wearing masks, and I'm supportive of that. But that's my point.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Gustafson.
Yeah, I totally agree with Alderman Sullivan on that. I listened to the last meeting the other night on television, and it was difficult at times to hear people when they didn't have a mask on. So it, I think it's gonna be a big challenge. I'm 65 years old, okay? And I feel very comfortable in following the procedures that we followed last meeting. And I think it's critical that what we're communicating gets out to the people. And if they're, if they can't hear and it's muddled, why even have the meeting?
Alderman Shower?
I have no problems putting the mask on during these meetings, but I'll say this. I agree with both Alderman Sullivan and Gustafson that we need to be able to speak clearly and precisely. We've always had a challenge trying to get communication, especially when it comes to TVs and so forth. The one thing that I would ask is that we should revisit this every couple months, because for all intents and purposes, to say that we should have a mask on until a possible, you know, you know, who knows how long it could last for? So I think we should revisit every couple months. But I got no problems with it right now.
Just so, just so the viewing audience and the public understand, May 27th, we came out with a set of guidelines for reopening City Hall. If you go upstairs, you'll see signage. Some of you saw it as you came in. We put plexiglass in at the window for the building department, the same with the administrative department. When we come in during the day, we're wearing masks. When I go to my office, I take it off. I'm in my office. If somebody comes in my office, I put the mask on. If I leave my office to go talk to someone, I wear the mask. So I, I don't want anyone to think that the city is being negligent in any way. We're following the science. I agree, masks are important to wear. They're critical to wear, but I have a, I have a very, very much a concern with the ability to hear people when they're talking. Now, I'll be quite honest with you. Alderman Vaughn just made a presentation why he thought we should wear a mask. I missed 90% of what he said.
Yep.
I barely heard what he said. Even when he doesn't have a mask, I have a hard time hearing people.
I can say it again.
Hearing him. He does speak very lightly. So Lester, if we wear a mask, please speak right into that microphone. But again, it's the council's choice. I will live with whatever the consensus is. Alderman Clistic?
Yeah, just one, two quick comments. The first one, after every meeting, there is meeting notes. So in case someone didn't hear, you're more than welcome to look it up on the city webpage for meeting notes. So we're making sure that you can hear something or someone potentially dying. So for me, it's pretty straightforward.
Alderman Kenny, you haven't, you haven't said anything.
I don't want to wear the mask, but I'm wearing it out of respect. We've got plexiglass on both sides of us. Put things in perspective, my wife is a nurse. My wife was a nurse on a COVID-19 unit, okay? Not every nurse is going to pass away. I'm sorry that that nurse died. And I'm, I'm, I know there's a reporter on the patch is gonna take my words out of context here, okay? But I've lived with the fear of, with the wife coming home every night, knowing if I'm gonna catch it or not. And her attitude has been, she's got as much chance of catching it at Aldi than she does, you know, working on a COVID-19 unit. We all gotta be careful. We all have to wash our hands. We all have to be respectful. But I don't believe that there's any of us that are between these glass, between this glass is, you know, proposing any greater risk to any one of us or our families that is in between here. But like I said, I'm wearing the mask out of, out of, out of respect. But right now, if I had my choice, it would be off.
Mike?
My own opinion, basically like you're saying, we bought these, the mask is supposed to protect us from transmitting it to others. We bought these to block it from transmitting to others. The audience is a far distance from us. I mean, even, I went to the zoo today, and they allow you to take off your masks as long as you're six feet away from anybody. So I agree with what you say. I mean, I get yelled at all the time by the video guy that, hey, I can't hear you speak into the microphone. And I'm usually pretty loud, or my kids would say I was always pretty loud. Maybe I'm a lot quieter at council meetings. But as, I, I respect, I mean, I wear it in, and I thought our procedure was we're going to wear it in until we're in our sort of confined little area here. And that's what I'm comfortable with. And we're sort of the same age, Joe, and we're in that higher risk area, but I'm not uncomfortable with that.
Joelle?
I am at risk, but I will wear the mask out and about. Doesn't bother me to take it off between the plexiglass, though, because I am confined.
Okay. Brian?
Mayor, I did get a text from a resident saying that she could hear every word we're saying. So she asked that I let the council know.
Okay.
From a Mrs. Lauren Vaughn.
Then I'd like to have a vote on it. And I'd like to have a, I think Alderman Shower makes a point. I'd like to say that we come back and we revisit this. And so if, I'd like, I'd like it agreed that if we're gonna wear a mask throughout the meeting, that we revisit it at a designated time. So would somebody like to give me a designated time? End of September? Do we wear them from now through August through September? How do you want to do it?
I'd say through the end of September, and then we revisit at the first meeting in October.
Okay.
Until they find a vaccine.
Are we all agreed that we'll wear our masks throughout the meetings until October 1st, where we will discuss it and we'll make a decision at that point? Do I have agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we taking a vote?
We don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion.
No.
I think we have a majority voting for it.
Thank you.
All right. That'll be the accepted policy until October 1st, at which point we'll discuss it again. Now, it takes us to question, questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public and the audience to come to the microphone and share with us anything that's necessarily on our agenda tonight.
Is this when I come up or no?
Uh, no, you come up when we have the discussion on the issue.
What's he gonna talk about?
Uh, the Darien Dash.
Oh.
That is on the consent agenda.
No, it's not. It's under new business.
Yeah, it sounds like he has something else.
He could talk now. He's got three times in a meeting to talk, right?
You wanna talk now? Talk, three minutes, James.
All right. I'll take it out so I can speak. Yes?
No, I think you're supposed to.
You should leave it on.
Leave it on.
Okay. I was confused by that one. All right. So I'm James Burke. I'm the chairman and board of the Chamber of Commerce. And I must have been thinking about dinner when I came here, because I wrote down some notes here, and what this little speech has is appetizer, main course, and dessert. Here's the appetizer. Appetizer, as you were discussing this tonight, the Darien Dash, it's August 23rd. I just wanted to, you might not know this information. The timing company said because there's only about 250 or so people that are gonna run in the Darien Dash, they can separate people for social distancing purposes, give them a time to start their run. And I just wanted to let you know that. Okay? That's the appetizer. I'm gonna skip to dessert, because dessert's pretty good. We have this, uh...
Can you just grab that mic? I'm sorry. We moved it earlier because of the cord in front of Alderman Shower. Thank you.
Can you not hear me? Want me to start again?
You heard me, right?
Yeah.
The people at home probably didn't, if you weren't on the mic. That's why.
All right. So appetizer. Appetizer, it was Darien Dash I was speaking of. This is for the Chamber of Commerce. August 23rd, we want to have the Darien Dash. I thought that you might not know this information, so I wanted to present it to you tonight. The timing company has said that they can social distance the runners, because there's so, there's not like 1,000 runners at this event. There's 250 or so runners approximately. So they can give people a time to start running, and then that way they can social distance. So just, I just wanted to let you know that information before you voted on anything about the Darien Dash. And then I had the main course and the app and the dessert. I'm skipping the dessert. Dessert is, we have this car show going on right now. And the car show, I did a, just a informal survey of the businesses there to see what their foot traffic has been, Q bar, the various restaurants there, Rosati's, all the restaurants, and then also the pet shop. And we had four new, one paid right tonight to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Four have given a verbal commitment to join the Chamber of Commerce. So they're very happy with the car show and what that's done for them as increasing their foot tra, traffic for the event. And what it also is doing is bringing tourism to the city, because we're having, we had 100 cars last week. We had 75 cars this week. So I just want to let you know that. Now for the main course. This is what I'm here about, really. We want to have a 50-50 raffle at this, don't, I really want to speak first before you answer the question. We want to have a 50-50 raffle at this event. The reason that we want to have the 50-50 raffle is, right now, we're losing money by having this event. Even though we're increasing tourism, we did have some new members, which is good for us, but we're losing money running the event. Now, here's my proposal, because I know, I pushed for Monday night, by the way, because I knew that the, that it would be good for the Q bar, and I knew that we were gonna have our raffle for the Lions Club. I am a lion as well. So I knew that the Lions Club was gonna have their raffle, and I thought it would increase the foot traffic for the Q bar, thus increasing the foot traffic for the raffle. Now, here's my proposal, since I hear that I may have shot myself in the foot by proposing Monday nights. Instead of doing a 50-50 raffle, do a third, third, third raffle. Do a third to the public winner, whoever wins the raffle. Do a third to the Darien Lions Club raffle, and do a third to the Chamber of Commerce. The third that goes to the Darien Lions Club, if they win the raffle, that would be split 50-50 with the person that won the 50-50, the 50-50 raffle. Does that sound like a good proposal? Anyway, that's all I came here to say. Any questions?
I'll talk to you.
Go ahead.
So the raffle and the race, those are two separate things? Or is the raffle at... Race is totally different. The race, I know that you were, you were gonna talk about the race tonight, and I just wanted to provide that information for you, because I knew that that might be something you didn't know, because I just found out about it tonight.
Gotcha.
I was at the car show today. You guys have been an amazing job. A lot of people out there, some amazing cars. AMC DeLorean, if anyone's seen Back to the Future 1, 2003. There's some nice cars out there.
Just clarify for the audience.
One more thing, too, is that I know one of the issues was that you don't put out more than one raffle license, but at the Darien Fest, we have several raffles done at the same time. We have the Bingo. We have the Silent Auction. We have pull tabs for the veterans. So it's been done before, so I don't know why that's an issue.
The veterans were the only ones who were issued a raffle license.
We had Bingo, too.
They were the only ones who were issued a raffle license. I'm telling you the straightforward truth.
Bingo's not considered a raffle.
Well, I would like you to reconsider and issue us the opportunity to make some revenue during our car show that's actually helping the city. That's what I want you to do. That's my ask.
The public should know that on that same evening, Monday night, the Darien Lions Club runs their Queen of Hearts Raffle at the same location. And I see it as a conflict with that. I've been to your car show several times. The public is not turning out.
Did you hear my proposal, though?
People to where they would, they'll be buying tickets for you and tickets for the Lions. I see very, if you divide it up in thirds, I see you making very little money in that.
That's okay with us.
Pardon me?
That's okay with us.
Well, I'm not very much for it, James.
Well, that's why I'm here.
I know. And I'm basically telling you that I'm not gonna grant a license for a 50-50 raffle.
And I'm basically asking for it. So I would hope it would come to a vote.
It's not a, it's, it's my decision to make.
It's your decision?
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda this evening. The public comment is so everybody can hear, so the mayor will take under consideration, and I would imagine formally get back to you.
I'll formally get back. I already talked.
You want to talk about it in, another, you want to talk about it, or no?
You're welcome to come in to see me.
Okay. Do I, if I brought up, if I got some people to support this from the community, would that help?
You can bring in as many people as you want, James.
All right. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, just one suggestion. The council spent about 10 minutes talking about masks, and the first speaker was not clear on if he should wear a mask or not. Maybe if you could just reiterate, the addition to the rule is that the alderman will wear the mask during the whole meeting, and as residents are speaking, they'll also wear the mask. For some reason, there was a little confusion on the first speaker, so I want to make sure everybody understood the rules.
Does anybody else have a comment they'd like to make at the microphone today? If not, then I'd like to move to approval admittance for June 15, 2020. I need a motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Thon?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The amendments are approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications for the council? Alderwoman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had several residents in the Terra Hill subdivision complaining about excessive noise and nuisance of a neighbor. And we have had some very productive communications with the Darien Police Department, and it seems like some progress has been made. And this past weekend, things were much quieter. So I want to thank the Darien Police Department and city staff for being so responsive and, and helping out the neighbors. There's also was an inquiry from a resident who is an attorney outside of town, who has, in his jurisdictions in other parts of DuPage County, seen problems with short-term rentals and leases, homes being turned into like VRBOs and Airbnbs. So we did communicate with Joe Hennefrin and Dan Gombeck, and just clarified our stance in the city in terms of rentals and, you know, people having to be related and whatnot. So that came to a conclusion. And lastly, a resident contacted me today who lives in Pinehurst, close to Carriage Greens, or backs up to Carriage Greens Golf Course, just expressing a desire to have a fence put up along Bailey Road buffering the course, because people have been walking their dog, taking strolls on the golf course during the day. If you're not a golfer, you wouldn't realize this. I am a golfer. That's very dangerous. You know, obviously, the course is intended for people to be playing. The paths are intended for people to be walking on with golf carts and driving carts. I would really discourage you from walking the course during, you know, daylight hours, because you could, you know, be, be not seen until it's too late and you're hit by a ball. But I am gonna meet with Carriage Greens and Brian Broderick and talk a little bit about how, you know, we can, you know, make it more clear to non-golfers that the, you know, during the day, the course is intended for golf use. I think people got used to using the course when it was closed, you know, over the spring months, when it would have normally been open. But, you know, I think I encourage people to use other walking paths in our community, just for your own safety.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Chief Thomas, I forgot a communication during our police committee meeting this, after this, this evening. Bonnie Casera in Norman Courts had reached out talking that somebody had called her up looking for donations, and that Chief Thomas endorsed the organization. And that was, wasn't, that wasn't the exact truth, correct, Chief?
That is incorrect.
It was correct?
It's absolutely correct. It, I did not.
Okay, right.
Endorse any type of solicitation.
So it goes to show, make sure that when they call you up and say, you know, Chief Thomas endorsed it, you know, call one of us just to, just to double check.
And it was actually a little more of an inference, because it didn't have Chief Thomas, it had Darien Police Chief or however it was phrased. But regardless, it's, was not endorsed by the police department or by myself.
I didn't think so. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, today, a resident sent an email regarding the fumes coming from the Home Depot generator. He sent that to Dan and I. Dan sent that email over to the store manager at Home Depot for their comment.
Alderman Clistic?
Yes. Received two pieces of communication. First one from Mickey Magnifico from Brookhaven Plaza. She's a veteran. She had an issue with an insurance company paying for a water breakage in her facility. She reached out to me and the mayor. We both sent her to DuPage County. Special thanks to Greg Hart and Julie Ranahan for the veterans group that DuPage County has, have, has reached out to her to give her a hand for a place to live in case they don't fix it in time. I also received a communication from Jerry Legansky from 8,000 Block of Farmingdale with regards to the power being out. There were some issues that came out for, you know, a half hour, some concerns from residents. And Brian was communicating with ComEd and has that taken care of, so.
Anything else? All right, that takes us to the mayor's report. I'd just like to start off by saying that for those of you who didn't know of him, former Westmont Mayor Jim Eddington passed away this weekend. Jim was a trustee at the time of his death. He was mayor from 1993 to 1997. He was a member of the Westmont Lions Club from 1971 till the time of his death, and he was the past district governor for District 1J. He was a member of the St. John's Council. He was a member of the St. John's Council Knights of Columbus. I served with Jim on the Legislative Committee of the DuPage Mayor's and Managers. He will be dearly missed, not only by the residents of Westmont, but by all of those who are fortunate to know him and work with him. Jim was a great friend to the city of Darien. I have an honor tonight to recognize an individual who has provided outstanding service, not only to our community, but to other communities. Six years ago, the Darien Lions Club developed an award called the Darien Lions Humanitarian of the Year Award. This is an award that we decided would go out to an individual, not necessarily in the city of Darien, but someone who's performed an outstanding humanitarian service. Over the six years, we've given out five awards to those residents, to those people, several of them from Westmont, several from Darien, and tonight, we're honored to be able to give one out to Mrs. Deneen Ruffalo. Whereas Deneen Marie Ruffalo was born in Elseb, Illinois, the daughter of Robert and Jaclyn Spears, she has two siblings, Roberta Narcus and Paul Spears. And whereas Deneen grew up in Darien, Illinois, attended local public schools, which included Concord Elementary School, Cass Junior High School, Hinsdale South High School, and College of DuPage. Whereas Deneen has been married to Greg Ruffalo for 36 years, and I could probably just stop right there and say, you know... They have two children, Cassandra or Cassie, married to Frank Novarini, who have three daughters, Mia, Paige, and Brooke, and Michael, married to Mallory, who have one son, Carter. And whereas Deneen has held a variety of job positions, 1980 to '81 pharmacy tech at Walgreens in Darien, 1981 ponderosa on Route 83, 1981 to 1983 teller at Western Urban Bank, and in the loan department, 1983 to 1985 loan office manager, loan servicing at Lander Lincoln Savings and Loan, 1991 to 2010, started her own decorating company, DR Window Decor, and 2010 to now present Broker at Realty Executives. And whereas Deneen has received many accolades for her achievements, which included numerous sales trips as owner of DR Window Decor, and top producer of her office countless times over her tenure span at Realty Executives Midwest. In 2016, she won the Great Lakes Region Most Valuable Executive. In 2017, Deneen was awarded first place in the Great Lakes Region for the number of listings taken, in the same year, first place for total dollar volume of listings. In 2019, she achieved the status of being one of the top 5% of agents with Realty Executives International. Whereas Greg commented that Deneen is respected by her clients, she is always there for them and makes their transition as easy as possible. She has received many letters of appreciation from not only her managing broker, but other brokers, commenting on her willingness to help and her professionalism in competing, leading transactions smoothly. And whereas Deneen has volunteered her time in countless ways over the years. At Our Lady of Mount Carmel, she was the first teen on the parish council, a religious ed teacher, and a eucharistic minister. Deneen's civic affiliations include Safety Village, where she helped Cindy Hagan and Nick Perino, owner of Home Run Inn, organize the first Kids in the Park. She sold so much pizza that year that Dick offered her a job at Home Run Inn. Darien Women's Club for six years as member, secretary, and vice president. Hinsdale South Post Prom Committee for six years to ensure a safe senior prom. The Make-A-Wish Foundation for 10 years through Realty Executives. Tuesday Morning Village Greens Lady Galph Lake for three years, where she served as treasurer. And whereas Deneen has participated in Lions Club food baskets since 1993, delivering food to families in need. She has included her children, and now her grandchildren, to instill the importance of what she likes to call "cycle of service." In 2017, Deneen took over the gift portion of the baskets, which includes obtaining toy donations and wrapping paper, sorting and overseeing the wrapping of more than 4,000 toys, and recruiting volunteers from the Darien Lions Club, Darien Women's Club, Darien Rotary Club, Burr Ridge Senior Home, and Hinsdale South High School. And whereas Deneen loves all sports, she especially loves to golf, swim, and go to the beach, and simply be in the sun. And whereas Greg has commented that Deneen taught her children how to properly treat others, to always be kind, not speak poorly of others, but rather find good in them, to help by assisting others, and in the end, you will be rewarded. Deneen teaches her grandchildren how to be nice to others and to help those in need. Granddaughter Mia's favorite song is "Be Humble and Kind" by Tim McGraw. Whereas the city of Darien is proud to honor Deneen Ruffalo as the 2020 Darien Lions Humanitarian of the Year. Now therefore, I, Joseph A. Marches, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim July 24, 2020, as Deneen Ruffalo Day in the City of Darien, and recognize her many contributions to the community. I believe her husband Greg Ruffalo has some comments to make. Caught you off-guard, didn't I, Reverend?
Yes, he did. Well, good evening. This is a special moment for me, having the privilege of knowing her for the last 36 years. Her heart is bigger than most. She's a giving person, God knows she is, because she puts up with me. But in all truthfulness, she embraces service in all different forms, and I'm so lucky to have witnessed some of the things that she has done for others. She makes everyone feel welcome, she realizes that when something needs to be done, she helps, or does it herself. She's a great organizer, she gets people to rally around her, and allows her to accomplish great things. Especially for children, the project which she's spent the most time on over the last three years is an incredible event, as Mayor Joe knows very well. It's the opportunity to touch literally thousands of lives by providing gifts to children that otherwise would not have them. So this is a moment that I am so proud of and lucky to be a witness to and a part of with you, my wife. Thank you very much for everything you do.
I believe that we have Lion President John Pearson here tonight to present Deneen with the commemorative brick. John, do you want to explain the purpose behind this and how we do this?
Through our Darien Lions Foundation, we have a brick patio that we put a brick down for the Humanitarian Award. We also have a replica for you. But our brick patio is at Darien Community Park, and we have a lot of members, the past, present, and other Humanitarian Award winners, that get a brick for that patio. Also, our Lion of the Year gets one, and our lifetime achievement members, so. But thank you for what you do for the Lions Club.
I think the mayor's going down.
I think the mayor, yeah. There he is.
I walked all that way up for a picture.
Jen, you got it? I won't come to LA.
Greg, how about you? Okay.
That's Jen, right?
Yeah. Jen and Caitlin are both down.
Yeah, I won't worry about it. She doesn't throw it. One, two, one, two.
I want to thank the Darien Lions Club for this quite prestigious award. I want to thank the city of Darien for the proclamation. This is not my forte, this is Greg's. I'd like to be a helper. Growing up in Darien, I guess my parents have always raised me to be a giver back of our environment, of our community. Living here, growing up here, that's what I tried to do, and somehow got into the gift baskets, and into gifts, and Christmas in our family was always a big deal. And when our prior Chris Katsukas could no longer, retired from this position, we talked about potentially not doing gifts anymore. And that wasn't going to happen with me in this world, because for any child to not have a gift to Christmas was like, there was, that was just not a possibility. So for me to take that over was just not a second thought, and I'm glad I did, certainly not for all of this, but will be here to do it as long as I can. Want to thank all the volunteers that I've always had to help me. It's not done by yourself, and there's so many other people in this community that certainly deserves these awards as well. We live in a great city, a very giving city, and hope it, pray it continues that way. Thank you very much.
Deneen, we're all, all of those who've had a chance to work with you know how hard you worked and how much effort you put in, and this is just but a small token of the recognition you deserve for what you do. You make a lot of children happy at Christmas time, and God bless you.
Hey, Joe, I've become, I'm a Realtor now for 19 years, and I became a better Realtor when my office and her, and I moved it. It wasn't easy, you know, because I've got a big mouth, but I'm telling you, I can't, I can't, I couldn't do what I do today without her in the next door room, so, okay?
We're going to move on to our agenda. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Claudia Barowski and Ryan Grace to the Environmental Committee. This is a new appointment. I need a motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Would Claudia and Ryan come forward? All the way forward. 60.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Good.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Environmental Committee according to the best of my ability. Okay, I have something here for you to sign, and then there is a card underneath that you keep. So the first one you sign, and then the second one you keep.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Claudia? I'm still considering that document.
Thank you so much, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Item C is consideration of a motion to reappoint Deb Harkey, Alan Jackmick, and Alotta Pecknick to the Environmental Committee. Will they come forward, please?
You need a motion.
No, I'm sorry, we need a motion and a second first. Motion by Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan, and a roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The appointments have been approved. Now Alan, Deb, and Alotta, please come forward. I don't know. Yours is a little bit easier. Welcome back, thank you for your continued service.
Hello, Alotta.
Okay, well, we need to swear you in first. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Alan Jackmick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Environmental Committee.
Environmental Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, and since you're reappointed, you do not need to sign, but you do need to take your card. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your continued service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Item D, consideration of a motion to approve the reappointment of John Peter Armalino into the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Motion to approve. Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? None, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The appointment's confirmed. John, you want to come forward, please?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
John Armalino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
The Board of Police and Fire Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our last appointment, consideration of a motion to approve the reappointment of Jeff May to the Police Pension Board. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The appointment's been confirmed. Jeff, you want to come forward, please, get sworn in?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeff May.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Police Pension Board.
Police Pension Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, and here is your new card. Thank you.
Finally, under item F, we have a quarterly report that's going to be given to us by Metro Strategies. I believe we have Caitlin and Jenny Vanna both here. So ladies, if you want to come forward, go to the microphone. I think we have a handout that we've given to everybody.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. It's a pleasure being here with you tonight. My name is Jenny Vanna. I'm the Vice President of Communications for Metro Strategies, and Caitlin Sernak is a Project Manager, Communications Manager with Metro Strategies. About, well, about seven months ago, in January, we first started engaging with the city and did an effective... and did an effective, strategic communications plan. We did a strategy session with the mayor and Brian and key staff. And we developed a plan that came before the board. The board approved that and then retained Metro Strategies to implement the strategies and actions in that plan. And we've been doing that for about six months. And tonight, we want to report on some of the results and the findings of your investment in communications. And overall, things have been, from our perspective, we want to hear what you have to say, but it's been going very, very well. We've developed a great partnership with the staff, and we really, really enjoy working with the city, and we appreciate that opportunity. So a couple of weeks ago, the city launched an online survey to seek feedback from your residents on how you are doing when it comes to communications and engagement. In about March was when we really kind of hit the ground running. We revamped the Direct Connect eNews, gave it a new look and feel, kind of revised the format to make it very, you know, succinct, digestible content, added more visuals, made it a little more visually appealing. So we've been doing that for several months. We also implemented a Nextdoor account and started more regularly communicating across your social media channels. And we're going to share some of the metrics and measurements specific to those channels. I'm going to focus more on the survey results. And so overall, we had 347 people respond to your survey. Overall satisfaction with your Direct Connect is about 85%. That said that they felt that the eNews met or exceeded their expectations. When it came to social media, about 84% said that the social media content met or exceeded their expectations. The survey respondents said that the top three sources for receiving city information is Direct Connect eNews at the top, at 77%. And I think that's a very big surprise. That's, that's great information that we want to know, that they are getting that, relying on that information that they're receiving from their Friday or Thursday eNews. We also asked about responsiveness to city emails and calls. 74% said that it exceeded or met expectations. And what are people interested in? So this, again, probably not a big surprise, we're seeing this across all of your platforms, but people are very interested in police and crime information. 69% said that that was one of the top three things they're most interested in, as well as city council decisions, city services, both at 52%. And then followed by local events and happenings at 51%. And so again, that is consistent with what we're seeing on your social media channels as far as what people are, the kind of content that they're interested in, in your eNews and on social media. I just want to share a little bit of some things and trends that we've seen across the clients that we serve since the pandemic, you know, occurred and hit us. So we have found that overall engagement is drastically increasing. People are turning to local governments as trusted sources of information because they're being inundated by information from so many sources, and they don't know what to trust. And so they are turning to their local governments, even as opposed to media, saying, what do I need to do? What is the information that I need to protect me, to protect my health and my family? And so we've seen that across all of the different communities that we're providing communication services in, that the engagement, the followers over the last several months has since COVID-19 hit us, that those have all increased. And Caitlin's going to share the numbers on those. The survey also had lots of comments and feedback from your residents, lots of, you know, positive things about what the change and the transformation that they've seen, but also some opportunities for improvement. I think they shared some things that they're interested in seeing more about, and so we'll be talking to staff and looking for ways that we continue to improve communications. So I'll hand it over to Caitlin and then answer any questions.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Sernack. As Jenny mentioned, I'm the Communications Manager for this project. And so my role is, I'm really involved in the day-to-day content planning, accounts monitoring, working really closely with the staff on developing the kind of messages we want to share with residents to make sure that they're timely and relevant and useful, are really our goals. And as Jenny mentioned, in the past six months, we have seen really huge increases in engagement, reach, and followers. So I'll just kind of give you some of the highlights for the platforms that we are using with the city here. So for Facebook, there has been an 18% increase in followers and page likes, so that's your audience. So, you know, coming close to 20% growth in audience over the past six months is really remarkable. And part of that is driven by the coronavirus pandemic, and part of that is driven by, you know, residents finding a lot of value in the content that we're sharing. Also Twitter, similarly, about a 35% growth over the past six months in terms of followers. Nextdoor, it's a little bit different beast. People join the platform, and as a city, we helped, you know, we helped the staff create a agency page to share official city messages through the Nextdoor platform. So there has been more modest growth on Nextdoor members, but that is, you know, again, a really important platform, especially for homeowners. Another metric that we really look to in terms of, you know, to measure how useful and valuable content is to your audience, is engagement. So that's things like clicks, likes, shares, comments. And so looking at Facebook, we saw a 118% increase in average monthly engagements since the beginning of the year. Nextdoor, we have about a 71% increase, or sorry, pardon me, 18% increase in reaction. So that's people commenting, thanking, interacting with that content. And Twitter, a 76% increase in average monthly engagements, clicks, likes, retweets, that kind of thing. And another metric that's really important for assessing the value of our communications is the reach. So that's how many people are actually seeing what we're putting out there. On Facebook, we saw an over 120% increase. Twitter, what do we have here? About an 84% increase, and Nextdoor, 71% increase. So we're really expanding that, you know, universe of people who are seeing the content. One of the things that really helps drive this, and that just anecdotally is the person that's in there looking at your accounts every day and interacting with residents' comments and digesting things, is Darien has a really active and engaged audience. People are, you know, generous with their comments, their likes, their shares, or, you know, feedback that's, that's more in the, like, I don't know, like, that's the word I'm looking for, like constructive feedback. So we're definitely receiving that too, which is great. It's part of that two-way conversation. And something that we've discussed, just compared to other clients where we provide similar services, for, you know, example, we work with another municipality of the similar size, and Darien's social media following is about twice that audience. And what that results in is much higher engagement. Darien's audience has about two times higher engagement than a similar audience that we work with. So on average, that municipality sees about 2,400 engagements per month. Darien's is closer to 6,000. And when we're looking at impressions, which is the number of people who see all your content, that comparable municipality is about 45,000 per month. In the past couple of months, Darien has hit or surpassed 100,000. So, you know, I think what the audience is doing to promote your content, and I know that the council members engaging with the content too really helps, it all contributes to spreading the city's messages, giving people valuable, useful, timely, relevant information. So it's, it's really been rewarding to work with you all and to see that kind of growth.
We have questions or comments for Jenny or Caitlin? Ladies first.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Joe. I just want to say I'm grateful for our partnership. I think, you know, it was, it obviously came out of our goal-setting to go down this path, but I think the timing of it starting has been really ironic because the year has taken off in a direction I don't think any of us thought it would back in January on so many different levels. And thank you for always being so open to suggestions and ideas. I guess, two question is, I know we went back and forth and had to make some changes with our budget, but is there any plan in the future for a printed piece going to the community? And how do you think we could get more subscribers, especially to like Direct Connect? Because to me, that is such a critical piece. I know all of us who have a social media presence here in council chambers share and encourage, but like, what more can we do to get that number higher?
If I could answer the printed piece, we did, we took that out of the budget this year. We have not made plans, but now with this county agreement, we are able to put out something COVID-related and get reimbursed for that. So we just started talking about that briefly, but we're going to be now looking at doing something like that since we'll get reimbursed.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Mary. Certainly, I think you just, we have to continue to beat that drum and constantly put strategies in place to grow that Direct Connect audience. And so that means, you know, through connecting your audience on social media, encouraging them to sign up for eNews. Also, we're going to be working with the city staff, and I'm sure you'll receive this information, adding that signature block to your email, so every email that goes out, it's very prominent, you know, that to subscribe for eNews. I know on the website now it's more prominent where people can sign up for that, so I think it's just kind of constantly focusing on that. You know, we're in a very interesting environment right now, but, you know, when we return to a normal state where you're interacting with residents, having cards that, you know, have that text to sign up, which is very easy, you know, getting those in people's hands, talking about it, letting them know the value of receiving that direct communication from their city is something I think everybody can help with to grow that audience. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just looking at the different accounts, so Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter, and if you were to add up the followers, you come up, you know, just a hair under 1,100. Is there a way of distinguishing how many of those are unique? So how many people are actually multiple, you know, multiple, multiple accounts? So it's not exactly 1,100 people that are out there. And if you add the 260 to from.
Right.
The Direct, the Direct Connect, I was just wondering, is there, is there a way of establish, because yours, because obviously if people are commenting, you might see the same comments on Facebook as you do on Twitter, as you do on Nextdoor.
Right.
Okay, that's my first question. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, it's a good question, and I'm not, and I'm not aware of that. Although, I do think that there are different kinds of people that use Facebook than, that use Twitter, that maybe, you know, get their information from eNews, right? You have younger, you know, younger audiences are more active on Twitter. I'm not a big Twitter user, right? So I'm not going there to get my information. So I think that there is some differences in the kind of audience, but I'm also sure that there's some duplication and redundancies.
Okay. And one other thing, Patch, do you have any control over what goes, I mean, I know you're not the one actually writing it, okay?
Right.
But do you follow it, do you monitor it? So a couple of months ago, the mayor and I were having a discussion, and I, I responded back with a question, and the, the next day, I'm not going to make the writer, but said that Kenny shot back.
Yeah.
And there was no shot back. And there's things that I'm noticing in the patch, and that's not just one time, it's been a couple of different times where things get taken out of context. And the people that are writing this, that are not sitting here in the audience, they're sketching, catching it off of YouTube and not picking up a phone and like old-fashioned journalism and following up on it, is there anything that you can do to assist us with that?
So we do monitor Patch, and we certainly can assist in media, you know, relations. I'm a former news reporter, and so I agree, they should be picking up the phone and calling and to get a quote to, to write their story. Certainly, if there was an issue, misinformation or something, we could work with that reporter, and I've worked with reporters many times in my life, to, you know, correct information. Sometimes, you know, it happens, sometimes it doesn't. But the other thing that we can do, and we are working on, is being able to directly put content onto Patch's site as a community contributor. And so that's something that we've been trying to establish and be able to do, and so we are working on doing that. So then, a reporter might, you know, then you are the source of that information, putting it out on that platform. The reporters may cover some things or not, but then you have more opportunity to have your information as the source, you know, placed there.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Brian?
Yeah, just from the staff's perspective, you know, this was new for the city. We knew Metro was a quality company, but we didn't really know what to expect. And I would say, three areas to me that are really great and exceeded expectation are the quality of your written work, the timeliness of everything, your responsiveness, things like that, and you're very creative in, in the design and different things. And those are all great things, and we're, I feel very fortunate, you know, and have seen the improvements. And again, we wanted to share this now with the, with the residents because it's been, you know, you know, about a half a year now. So again, hopefully, the elected officials are seeing the improvements. As I follow this, I'll see some of you comments or likes, so I, I know you're watching it, but great job from our perspective, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. Again, the timeliness and your responsiveness are just outstanding. And I consider myself a good writer, but the way you take my writing and the way you format it, and you make us all look good. And the, and the fact that we could send you something at nine o'clock in the morning and in the afternoon, it's reformatted and it goes out, and it looks wonderful. The suggestions that you make, outstanding. Caitlin, I don't know where you get the time to do everything you do, but you mustn't go to bed at all or sleep because you're there all the time. I can send you an email and you respond all the time, and that's much appreciated, believe me. And again, the last six months have been, who knows what the last six months have been? I don't think there's any way of describing it, but I think, I told Brian, I said, we are very fortunate that we entered into this agreement and we had you guys available when we encountered all these difficulties this year, so much thanks to you.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to provide the update, and it really has been a pleasure, and we appreciate the opportunity. And it is a partnership. This is an absolute, we feel, as we are part of, of your team and, and working, you know, with staff and the mayor very closely, and so that's very much appreciated.
Any comments by anybody?
I think part of the intent tonight was to, you know, get feedback from any elected officials, now that you've seen this. We're looking for that tonight, not for hours and hours, but we would hope to get some feedback tonight on, you know, how you have seen the social media change over the six months, if there's, if there's any.
Thanks, Mayor. I know I've been in council for a while, and sometimes we struggle whether to go to digital or print, and so this really opened our eyes, and I know city staff is always busy, so this sort of took part of it off their hands because to be able to respond, you know, you're running a city, you don't have time to respond every two seconds, so this is great that you're helping out. A quick question I have is, are you able to geotag and do paid advertisements? So what I mean by that is, okay, someone, for example, I go running in Darien, and I'm listening to Pandora, and I got the cheap version, for example, and advertisement for whatever will come up based on being in Darien, where it's Bueno Beef or Taco Bell. Can you guys advertise? Is that something the city can do or no legally?
So we, we've done boosting, right? Which is, you know, putting dollars behind, you know, on, on Facebook to, and you can like really identify your audience, right? If you really wanted to. So that also, the way the algorithm works, is if you really want to get that message out, putting a little bit of dollars behind it can help with that.
Okay, yep.
As far as geotagging, I have not seen governments really do that. That's an interesting question, and whether that's something that is available to governments as it is in the private sector, but, but the boosting or advertising is something, you know, that, that we can do. And it really, I think, depends on the message that you really want to elevate.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with all the laws and regulations regarding advertising for governments. I know, you know, I've seen it done on newsletters, obviously CTA buses, all kinds of different transportation. We have not looked into that, so again, I'm not familiar with all the rules and regulations of that.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Real quick, my numbers were way off. I was using the new, the new follower numbers as opposed, so it's, it's, there's thousands of people that are following these things. So my, so my apologies, I misspoke on that, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Takes us to the city clerk's report, Joanne.
No report this evening, thank you.
City administrator?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Department head, information, questions? Does anybody have any questions for either Chief Thomas or Mr. Gondberg? Alderman Clistic?
Thanks, Mayor. Quick question for Mr. Dan Gombach. A couple of months ago, during the vote for the Dunkin' Donuts and for the facade, Alderman Gustafson brought up changing our ordinances or standards for commercial property to require brick, and that was something you were going to look into, and then all of a sudden COVID happened, so I'm just wondering if any follow-up or anything that we could do to support or any background information on that. on that.
Oh, really, there was no direction on, you know, change in any type of architectural changes or mandating any type of architectural changes. So the answer is no. No further research has been done, with the exception of what other towns, you know, have such a code. And I know that that was shared with Alderman Gustafson.
Okay.
Anything else? I have a few comments. The, Alderman Kenny brought up a discussion about a company that used the chief of police of Darien, kind of hinting that, you know, we were supporting that or involved in it, we were not. And that one, I believe, was out of California. Probably like two weeks earlier, there was one that was done out of Texas, and that also we did not endorse. And I think we put something out on Facebook and, on that one as well. One that's coming around now, and you might have seen it on a couple of news channels, is the credit cards that were issued by the Illinois Department of Security, IDES, and KeyBank. Somebody obviously hacked into the system with a lot of people's information and were able to apply for unemployment benefits, and then have a credit card shipped to the address. And a lot of people have gotten those that never applied for any kind of relief. So if you received one of those, you can call the police department. We've probably taken a dozen or two dozen such reports. You can also, insured, report it to the unemployment office, the IDES, at their website. And if you scroll down at the bottom, it talks about how to report fraud as well. And I believe they're just recommending to destroy the card. But you're gonna want to make sure that that card has been reported to the police and to IDES, so that there is no future issue with them claiming that they gave you money, that you have to report on a tax, that you have to return or anything like that. So make sure that that gets done. But it seems pretty pervasive how, how far that, that reached out. So make sure that gets done as well. Anything else, Greg? Uh, one other thing that, on June 18th of 2018, or 2019, we went to a company called Hexagon. It's a, almost all of DuPage County went there for computer-aided dispatch, field based reporting, records management system, the mobile communication process, all these different types of things. And since then, the monthly report's been pretty lacking, because we couldn't get much data out of the Hexagon system. About a month or so ago, I met with the director of records management, went through a bunch of reports and what I need and those type of things. And then last week, met with the director of DuCom and made some downloads. And so I think we had that problem solved. So hopefully, next month, then you'll start seeing a better monthly report with data. And I'll clean up from last year to, through this year.
Hey, Chief, on the data, how, being a part of the DuPage portal, does that benefit us in any kind of way? Or is there a reason why we do it that way? Were we just all part of one database or portal where everyone's?
Yeah, it's, um, there, you have purchasing powered by a nice, robust system. CAD is computer-aided dispatch. That's only done by three agencies. You have DuCom, Arlington or Addison and the sheriff's office. And so everybody has that same software. So you're forced into that. And then you could go out on your own for records and some of those other things. But then you would have two disparate systems that don't talk to each other, or you have to write an interface to talk to them, and you're spending more money. So it was much better deal to go with one company. And some of it was growing pains and different types of things, but I think we're gonna get there. Thank you.
One other thing on those cash cards, is my understanding that, that money is taxable income. And people better be real careful at the end of the year, when you get your tax statement, that you're not getting taxed on that money, even if you didn't take the money and chop the card up. I'd say nine times out of 10, you're probably gonna get taxable income on that, because the state's not gonna get it right.
Yeah, I agree. That's why, make sure you make the report.
Next year's taxes, that you aren't getting stuck on that.
Yeah, make sure you're doing the report, so you have some backup that you did that. Make sure that you're reporting it to IDES as well, so that you have that, that report in hand, so that you can make that argument about not receiving it.
Right.
The bigger problem, I think, would, obviously, whoever did that hack wasn't trying to get everybody else money that they didn't deserve. I'm sure that they did it to get their own hands on that money. So people need to make sure that addresses and those type of things weren't changed, so that that card is going to another address and not to your address. So those that went to your own address, you know, you're gonna know that those happened. If they changed the address and that card was sent to the hacker, then you might not know that until you're not getting other pieces of mail or other items. So be on the lookout. Any questions for Mr. Gombach? If done, then we go to our treasurer's report. We have two warrants tonight. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 202105 in the amount of $132,195.24 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended June 18th and July 2nd in the amount of $524,702.26 for a total to be approved of $656,202.26.
Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Uh, our second warrant, Michael?
Requesting approval of warrant number 202106 in the amount of $1,145,193.20 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended July 16th in the amount of $261,355.39 for a total of $1,406,548.59.
Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Shower. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Takes us to standing committee reports. Do any of the Aldermen have reports from their committees tonight? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the police committee signed the minutes over to the clerk for our June 15th meeting. Our next police committee meeting will be on August...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Yes.
Seventeenth, six o'clock, Crest Street, in the police training room.
Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And earlier today, we did approve the minutes of the municipal services committee meeting of June 15. Our next municipal services committee meeting will be on August 24 at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sullivan?
The next administrative finance meeting will be here in council chambers at 6:00 PM on Monday, August 3rd.
Thank you. It takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding anything on our consent or our new business agenda? How about our council? I know we didn't get much time to talk about it. Okay. Takes us to old business.
You got a question there?
Quick, quick question. And this also includes new business then, right?
Yes.
Uh, a concern on the Darien Dash. I run the Chicago Half Marathon 10 years in a row. They canceled it this year. The gentleman mentioned the staggered start, and they do that in the Chicago Half Marathon based on your time. But as you're running, you're right next to each other, you're touching each other, you're doing things. I read today that the Marine Marathon that they run in Virginia, they looked at all different options and just finally said, there's just no way to do it. And I'm all for it, but the concern is that I feel like it's a little tone deaf saying we're gonna do a Darien Dash while all, everyone else is canceling. So I'd have a little concern supporting a Darien Dash this time around.
But you have no problem going to the car show though, right?
Uh-uh. Are you running at a car show? Have you ran a half marathon? It's tough. I mean, you're exhausted, you're, so it's a little different. I mean, it's, it's great. I've done the Darien Dash. I fully support them. I just think there's, we're gonna get some feedback that how could we even consider doing the Darien dashes? All the bigger ones are canceling, so.
I think like everything, Alderman Clistic, we need to keep our eye on what's going on. I, I get weekly phone calls, or excuse me, Zoom meetings with the DuPage County Department of Public Health. I had an hour meeting this morning. I received the latest figures. We had discussions with regard to the changes made to restore Illinois by Governor Pritzker with the new metrics, and where we might go with that. We have seen a slight uptick in the number of positivity cases from 2% to 4%. But hospitalizations have fallen. Ventilators, people on ICU units has dropped. And of course, now we're part of King County, with King County, so our numbers are gonna be different because of that. But the DuPage County Department of Public Health is monitoring everything. We're getting that data almost daily. And I think that we're cognizant of that, we're cognizant of the changes that might take place. And if anything, a severe uptick takes place, I'm sure that we'll have to deal with it with regard to the Chamber of Commerce and that event. As important as that event is to the chamber right now, I would hate to see that event canceled. I realize the logistics and how it has to be laid out for, for the social distancing to take place. And I understand your concerns. My hope is that they can do it successfully. And my hope is that we don't see any drastic changes in the, in the numbers, so that that event can take place and take place successfully.
If there is a outbreak before the 23rd and numbers shoot up, we do have the ability to cancel.
Yeah, we have the ability to pull the premier.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do. Not looking forward to it.
No, I, I understand that.
Alderman Vaughn?
Do you know if they looked into healthiness virtually? I know that the Hinsdale Rotary, they're doing a virtual run, where it's been pretty popular for a lot of marathons and running events, where they did a, did it virtually. Have they looked into that? Have they considered that? I know it's important, but protecting the lives of other people is important too. So I think that's of greater importance to me.
Well, you know, I think all these organizations need to look at alternatives in terms of fundraising. I don't mean to appear as an ogre to a lot of the organizations, but I've already talked to Historical, I've already talked to the Lions Club, I've already talked to the Rotary, and I already told them that the city will not be granting any permits for any street collections or in front of store collections this year, because it just doesn't make sense to ask people to go stand on a street corner and collect money and give candy out to people who are fearful of, of COVID. And so all those organizations have been told that. And hopefully, this goes through with the Chamber of Commerce, because I know how, James has had a tough year. Money-wise, they are hurting, and I understand that. James makes a good point, and I don't mean to, to tell him otherwise, but at the same time, you know, if, if things move in, into a different direction, we would have to take some type of action. So they might want to think about an alternative fundraiser. Okay. Anything else? Ted?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things, when I ran the Darien Dash and five years ago, and one of the reasons why I really don't have a big problem with this, is that we had hired a company where you have the time chips that basically do not start until you pass the start line, and then it ends when you hit the finish line. And because of that, I, I think if they're willing to stagger it, I think we should be okay. But that's just my personal opinion. So if they didn't have that, then I'd be like, wait a minute. But so.
So the question is...
To be quite honest, Illinois, Illinois is, is really doing well. If you look at the numbers, DuPage County and King County is doing well. We're, I saw, Alita Peknik and I saw a report the other night through Argon National Lab, a Dr. McCall, who does all the scenarios for Mayor Lightfoot, and does all the scenarios for Governor Pritzker. And he basically came out, had a chart, I don't know if Alita remembers this, but one of the charts showed where we were on a graph as of June 1st. And he said, following June 1st, if everyone continues to wear masks, and if everybody continues to practice social distancing, he showed the numbers going down into November and December. Likewise, he showed another graph as of June 1st, and he said, if only 50% of people wear masks after June 1st, and only 50% practice social distancing after June 1st, the numbers go up. And in fact, they peak higher than where we've been. So there is, there is a real concern about where we may go if people become too lax. And, you know, while we had this discussion about masks tonight, I wear a mask, and I very much believe in wearing masks. I, I had some differences with a couple of you as to wearing them here, but that's fine. But in terms of public, I, I think we really need to be concerned about that, because I think people might be coming a little too comfortable with our old dining van and whatever. So.
One, one more question on Darien Dash. Where do you stage the 200 people? How many, how many people are involved? 200, maybe? Where do you stage those people so they can stagger? Did they give explanation on that? How, how do they, how do you stage those people where they're staggered in between?
I don't know.
You know, so, you know, it's...
Okay, anything else? All right. Takes us to old business, and there being none, it moves us to the consent agenda. We have two items. Item A, consideration of motion to approve an ordinance replacing Title 8 Police Regulations, Chapter 20, drug paraphernalia of the City of Darien, of the Darien City Code, excuse me. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance replacing Title 8 Police Regulations, Chapter 7, Cannabis Regulations of the City of Darien, City of Darien City Code. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. The roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The consent agenda's been approved. Takes us to new business. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve the Darien Chamber of Commerce 20th Annual Darien Dash, a 10K run, 5K run, and a one-mile walk on August 23rd, 2020, beginning at 8:00 AM. Unauthorized to Chief of Police to finalize the details of this event with the Chamber of Commerce. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Questions or comments?
Mayor, I gotta be honest, I'm concerned. A minute ago, you just said you don't know where the, how many people they're gonna stage, and you didn't have an answer to that question. And I don't mean to call you out on it. But up until then, I was, you know, leaning for this. If we don't know what the protocol is and how they're possibly gonna stage that many people, I think we really need to know what that, what that is going forward. And all of a sudden, I've just, I've just, I've got a really bad feeling about not knowing all the details on this.
Anyone else have concerns?
Can I ask a question? And they usually come into the city here to pick up their packets or their bags for when they're going to do the race. Are they going to be doing that here at City Hall or outside, or?
I'm unaware of that.
Yeah.
No further questions. Could we have the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Nay.
Clistic?
Nay.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Nay.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Four ayes and three nays.
Motion is approved. Item B is consideration of a motion to approve the use of the right half of the following streets for the Darien Dash. And basically, I'm not gonna read this, but it goes on and explains what the 5K and 10K course entail, and the one-mile course entails. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Again, questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Nay.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Nay.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Nay.
Four ayes and three nays.
The course perimeters are approved. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance granting a variation from Section 5A, 59-8B, PZC 202006, for 8131 Lamont Road. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. And I guess this was something you voted on, recommended tonight.
Yes, municipal services, this was on our agenda this evening. It passed 3-0.
And also went through, it also went through zoning too.
Correct.
Right.
It also passed, yes.
Any questions? No more of the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion's approved. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Item D, consideration of a motion to approve resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Darien and DuPage County for participation in the DuPage County Local Government COVID-19 reimbursement program. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Clistic. And again, what you're approving here is an intergovernmental agreement that needs to be approved by all 35 DuPage County municipalities. And it was approved this last Tuesday by the DuPage County Board. And this intergovernmental agreement basically calls for how the CARES Act money that DuPage County is giving to the city will be administered and how we go about the process of asking for that reimbursement. And again, for the audience who might not have been here, DuPage County received $161 million in CARES Act money. DuPage was under no obligation to give any of this money to any of the municipalities. Working with DuPage Mayor's and managers, a number of us worked very hard with Chairman Cronin. We met with Chairman Cronin. We had numerous meetings. Steve Cherico, our outgoing president, had a lot of direct meetings with Chairman Cronin, as did a working group made up of managers like Mr. Vanna. And I think attorneys as well as managers were involved in the process. And they drafted, they drafted a plan that DuPage County Board approved, which calls for an amount of $51.84 per capita. And with a population of 21,600-plus, that would mean that Darien would be able to ask for reimbursement on $1.121 million. But that has to be COVID-related. It cannot be for loss of revenue by the city. It has to be direct cost. So for instance, these plexiglass walls that we have here, they cost $3,000. We can ask for reimbursement for that, the plexiglass upstairs. If Mr. Vanna, it's determined that 60% of his job since March has been to deal with COVID-19, we can deduct that salary from the amount. I think Brian mentioned that the money that we gave back to the businesses in food and beverage tax that we returned, it calls for any economic incentive program which we've established to help businesses out due to suffering through governmental action, which is what COVID-19 has done, that we can, that money that we've given them, we could ask for reimbursement. So that would be part of it as well. So there'll be a number of factors, directions that we will follow. We'll have to do a lot of internal analysis in terms of time. And I have to certify that anything we ask for is legitimate, that we are saying this is a legitimate expense. Now, obviously, commodities are much harder, easier to explain. It's much easier to say, here's a bill for plexiglass dividers, here's a bill for PPE, here's a bill for this, here's a bill for that. But we even asked Greg to take a look at the police department, look at the police and how many responses they might have made to COVID-related situations. Because there's costs there that we could deduct as well. And this is not something that just takes place once. This is for the period March 1st till end of December. So we're looking at the possibility of additional costs. If there is an upswing in terms of COVID in September or October, some additional costs that may cost the city. This is money that can be spent on that, as Brian mentioned. If we wanted to put out a printed document related to COVID-19 to our public through Metro Strategies, that would be something we could ask for reimbursement for. So these are things that we'll be looking to go over. Brian and the chief and I will be going through a lot of this. And again, I have to certify this with my signature. I won't go to jail or anything if I file anything wrong, but the City of Darien would have to pay back anything that the auditor says was not a legitimate expense. So you better believe anything we submit will be approved.
And we don't file now until December, after this fiscal year?
No, we can file, my intention is to file, once the agreement's approved this evening, file everything we know about through today, and then probably once a month, I would submit for that month, those month's expenses.
Running total, capping it at, and I think it's the 40, is it the $41 number? Because there's two numbers in the ordinance, 41?
The number we're reimbursed for is $51.84 per person.
Okay.
And the reason they got that figure is they, some counties got money from the state, from the state. And what the state did is they used an average by population which totaled 5184. So DuPage got its money directly. So we basically went with them and said, we want to be the same as the rest of the state and get 5184 per person. Somebody said Chicago Cook County is only going to get $5 per person. So we're actually getting a pretty good deal in terms of what we're gonna get. They didn't have to give any of this back to us.
Right.
You know, so it's gonna be, it's something that's gonna be helpful.
Alderman, Kenny mentioned two numbers, and I apologize, I'm looking for those. I don't remember.
They're in Chairman Cronin's letter.
The letter, and that's.
Oh, in the letter, not, okay, got it, thank you.
And that letter predated the agreement.
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor?
I guess, are any other entities like schools, the library, the park district able to take, to be a part of this or to partner with the city to access some of these dollars?
There was a lot of discussion about municipalities that have fire protection, where there was part of, like Naperville has, when you tax, you tax for that as well as the city, versus a city like Darien that has two fire protection districts. They've put, I believe, a million dollars to the side for those entities. As far as the park district is concerned, there's money going to be there for park districts as well that they need to apply. So Stephanie and the board need to make that application. As far as schools are concerned, I haven't heard anything said about schools, but I do know we were contacted by Senator Duckworth's office, and she wants information from us because she wants to propose another bill in September where more money would be coming to the municipalities to give to businesses within the community. But that's on the agenda. Again, this is the IGA, and once we approve this tonight, our copy goes to DuPage County. No more questions. Could we have a vote?
Sullivan.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Item E, consideration of a motion to direct staff to proceed with a landscape enhancement project and easement agreement the northwest corner of 7532 Cass Avenue, PIN number 0928402025. Motion to approve. Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman, Alderman Sullivan, and discussion. Alderman Belzak.
Is there any precedent for the City of Darien contributing to someone else's signs?
As far as, we're not, we're not gonna be contributing to any signs.
No, we're contributing to the, around the signs. I mean, it's part of an overall project. I mean, have we done that for any other businesses?
Not that I can think of, no.
Tom, could you clarify that? I think, you know, again, that's, we looked at it almost opposite because John Manos could put up a sign just the store. And we've said, if you put up this City of Darien lettering and things, so we look, I just looked at it a little bit opposite of that.
Right, but it is, it is the City of Darien contributing to the beautification of the sign, for lack of a better way of describing it. And, and I guess one of the problems I have is visualizing this because it doesn't, it says we're gonna have a retaining wall, but it doesn't talk about size or anything like that in it. It's kind of vague.
I do have a rendering, so I can go over it real quick if you'd like. So what we did is we had the landscape architect, just do option number 3, which was, you know, John Manos and his people were happy with that one. We thought that was the best representation for that corner. Basically, you have a V-shaped block wall. The block wall is similar to what is at the clock tower. The wall on each leg is approximately 30 feet long. There's what they call spireas, some blue spruces, you know, 16 karl Forster grasses, which I have no clue what they are, so, but it's very colorful. The goal was to make it as colorful as possible. On this wall would also be the City of Darien. The City of Darien more likely will be on this wall along and also on this wall here. The signs, which are independent of any cause the city is participating in, will be basically in the middle. There'll be a monument sign within the three-foot walled area. Okay, that'll be for Pedrinos and for Dunkin' Donuts. There's also gonna be a water feature in here, a pondless water feature. So a pondless water feature means that there will be no standing water in there for anyone to be, have any concern or liability. The water will basically come through the brick wall. Whether it's two locations or three locations, it'll be sort of a waterfall. The waterfall effect will be 365 days a year. You know, irrigation system in there so we can make sure that the flowers and all the materials are in good condition throughout the year. It's a colorful scene throughout the year. Total cost that we have assessed on this right now is at $42,000. Well, if they're $42,000, Manos LLC will be contributing approximately $21,000. Everything will be based on 50/50 cost share and actual costs. Long-term maintenance, I do have a cost, a cost for long-term maintenance that would also be shared. With this set, we would also need to put an easement in place. And this easement is now referred to as a landscape easement, whereas previously it was referred to as a sign easement. That was the sign which is no longer a valid concern for us. So really, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I'm not sure if I can answer anything.
Hey, Dan, I think Alderman Belzak's question or comment, the design came, the landscape architect did it gratis, free of charge. That's why, you know, it's not normally, if we were to pay for this, we would have had more detail.
Right.
But again, we were trying to gauge from the council if we should move forward with this before incurring real architectural expenses.
It's an overhead view, which made it difficult to visualize.
Exactly, I understand.
Correct, right.
Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, and Dan, now, this, so this option is the $21,000 that's gonna cost the city.
Correct.
What would that electronic sign cost the city on that same property?
No monies.
No monies. So exactly what was gonna happen, that I said was gonna happen has happened. We now turned down a free sign, and now I'm supposed to turn around and approve $21,000 for a sign and landscape that I could have gotten for free. I mean, we cut dollars out of the budget. I don't even know where this $21,000 is mysteriously coming from. We didn't have it. We cut all these items out. I think it's just physically and financially irresponsible to approve anything on this property when we could have had it for free. Why would I do that? It's just nonsense.
Well, because the first thing is, the long-term agreement was the reason why we didn't want to get into it. And secondly, we are working on a.
That's gonna be up there for a long term.
Let me finish, please.
So realize that.
Eric, let me finish, okay? We are now in the process of working on that corner. If we decide to beautify that corner later time, it's gonna cost us more than 21, it's gonna cost us more than $21,000.
Could have cost us nothing.
We put 60, we paid $60,000 for a water tower across the, a clock tower across the street.
You don't have to.
That I, hold on, that I voted, that I voted no on when I first, when I first got on the council. And then later on down the road, I'm talking to a lot of different residents about, you know, how they enjoy that and how we don't have a downtown area in Darien, and that's our focal point. So I can, I respect what you're saying, but I also see the benefit of spending the $21,000 on this project right now.
And after the electronic sign went in, people could have been, could have been thrilled with that too.
It would have been way.
Just like they did with the clock tower. So don't say that people were gonna be against it after it went in.
It was way.
Okay, why am I gonna pay $21,000 for something I could have had for free?
Eric, the reason you're gonna pay $21,000 is because it's an entryway into the City of Darien.
So would the electronic sign.
Yes, electronic sign was too big.
It's a beautification project. You're gonna have plantings, you're gonna have a wall that's gonna.
And this one isn't gonna be big enough to block anything that comes through there.
You're gonna have two blue spruces back there. You're gonna have, eventually, those things are gonna grow and they're gonna block the back of that building.
Eventually.
I want to remind people that what this is going to hide is the back of the building. The front of the building faces the parking lot. This is gonna provide a beautiful alternative to looking at the back of a building.
And so would the electronic sign.
The electronic sign would have been.
Would have blocked it off very easily.
Mayor?
The electronic sign was a digital billboard comparable to something you would see on a smaller scale along the interstate. It was free because it was relinquishing the city's control over advertising, and it would have been splashed with advertising of businesses likely not in our community, or we just don't know. It was, it was the great unknown. And I guarantee you, Alderman Gustafson, if you drove down Mountain Road.
I've been by there many times.
And I've been too. And I don't like what I've seen on the digital billboard.
I enjoy going by there, and I enjoy being able to get communication, information from the city off of the electronic sign, which now I will not get.
Well, I think.
All I'm gonna get is this big sign for Dunkin' Donuts and the other restaurant.
Well, I think by us doing something.
That's all it's gonna be sitting on there.
Eric, you're gonna get, you're gonna get a three-foot wall that's gonna be 60 feet long in V shape that's gonna have City of Darien on it in lettering. You're gonna have beautiful plantings, you're gonna have a waterfall feature, and you're gonna have landscaping behind the sign, which hides the back of the building. And you're gonna have a very nice business sign that Mr. Manos is gonna have for his two businesses.
Right, above all of that, which is, how tall is that gonna be? Probably almost the same high as electronic sign.
But it won't be electronic.
The entire structure can't be more than 12-foot high, which includes the base.
114.
This is a beautification project.
Two feet's costing me $21,000.
Mike?
I'm not gonna discuss, I mean, I agree to a certain extent on what Alderman Gustafson is saying. In terms of cost, you're right, the $21,000, and you have the annual maintenance besides. But I think that bridge has been crossed already. I'm just wanna address Alderman Belzak. His concern is, have we supported any other business paying like half the cost of their sign? I think if you look at it, Alderman Belzak, the council already approved, and I wasn't really too much in favor of that either, $150,000 for the improvements of that building. It's downtown Darien. Even the shopping center across the way, before that was developed, we gave some concessions because we wanted that built with a brick style instead of awnings and that, that they were originally gonna do. So while we may not have paid for a direct cost of a sign, we do pay for a lot of these costs in connection with this beautification of our downtown Darien. It's cost us a lot of money for a not true downtown Darien in my mind. But, I mean, it does look nice. Again, the water tower, I think it all does come together nicely. Is there a dramatic difference between this and the other? There was a waterfall feature in the other sign too, plus some advertising for the businesses. But again, that's out of my purview. But I just wanted to really address more Alderman Belzak's, has this ever been done before? And we have done it in sort of indirect ways in the past.
Alderman Shower, Alderman Vaughn? Go ahead.
I was in favor of the digital sign along with Gustafson, but I think, you know, and, and, I was, I was in favor of the digital sign at first and still is. But I think, you know, with, you know, overall plan to make a downtown Darien and make it look great, I think, you know, this would add some benefit to make it a downtown Darien. So, but, you know, I agree with Gustafson too, that, you know, we, he did mention that we're gonna deny this free sign and then turn around and pay, you know, money for a sign. But, you know, I think beautification is good, so, you know.
Alderman Shower?
Six, seven, eight years ago, when we were all sitting here, you know, talking about the new strip mall going in, we talked about upgrading it with a higher-end, you know, higher-end facade. We wanted to make sure that it was gonna look good, okay? We put the money into it. We had some discussion about the clock tower, okay? Went back and forth, that was split on that. Again, it was a beautification project. And then now, we turned around, I was gonna say that $150,000 we did approve for that building, and we're talking to basically improve this area for $21,000. The point is, is that we're doing it, we're gonna do it right, and it's gonna get behind us, and we're not gonna have to worry about it anymore. So I'm not looking at it as a loss of $21,000 versus whatever. I'm looking at it as a split that we're actually making money on this beautification project, so I got no problems with it at all. beautification project. So I got no problems with it at all.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
I just want to finish my thoughts from prior and just say that I'm a true believer that nothing is ever free and everything comes at a cost. Sometimes it's not a direct cost in terms of dollars, but it's in terms of control. And, um, I think, you know, the digital sign issue, I'd like to think of it as a thing in the past, and I'd like to see moving forward, beautification projects like this and in other areas of our community being addressed, um, to continue to make our town, um, even, you know, lovelier than it is.
Alderman Clister?
Uh, no, it looks, uh, looks great. Uh, one, one item I want to mention, uh, the treasurer mentioned about our downtown area. I have a college roommate who's a VP at Medline, uh, working on vaccine for COVID-19, and he moved into, uh, the Chicago line area, and I really pitched Darien, and eventually he picked Lamont, and I go, "How'd you pick Lamont? It's got a beautiful downtown. You guys don't have anything." So I was quite surprised personally how important it is. So maybe back in the day, a lot of people at the newspaper, but the new customers in this town went downtown, you know, so I'm, I'm sort of torn, but the, the feedback I get from residents, it's, it's a decision-maker, and I was quite surprised that, uh, he told me, you know, "If I'm a four makes $180,000, just pick Lamont because of a downtown," so.
Alderman Belzak?
Um, Dan got cut off when he was talking about the size of the sign. Could you repeat that again?
The size of the sign itself would be no bigger than, with the brick structure, no taller than 12 foot.
So 12 feet from the ground?
Right.
So it's going to have to be bigger than, it's going to have to be three feet off the ground or else it will be blocked by, uh, the, the retaining wall.
So in other words, if the retaining wall is three feet, that means the difference then is nine feet. So that's the total, that's...
But, but the, does the ground...
The ground constitutes part of the...
The bottom of the retaining wall or where the soil is? Because I assume the soil's, okay, it's, it's going to be the bottom of the...
The bottom of the existing ground, whatever, from the ground elevation to 12-foot, that's the elevation, total elevation. And the square, total square footage on a sign, uh, was 60 square feet, okay? So with that 60s...
So it would be six or seven feet wide.
Correct.
And, uh, we haven't budgeted for this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we would...
Well, we have, uh, you know, obviously tonight, if we're talking about the reimbursements, there's a, there's a, uh, amount of money that we'll be getting back that we did not anticipate. We, we maintain that $500,000 in our capital projects budget. Um, again, we're getting, you know, we're getting, you know, 100% investment on our money if you, you know, because we're cost-sharing. Um, pretty soon we'll be going through the audit numbers, which are probably going to be a little better. So i- if it's a matter of the, the amount of money, our budget could easily handle that, if it's a priority of the council.
Sorry. It's not so the, the amount of money, it's the amount of things that we took away that, that we're putting money into. And believe me, five years ago, I was all over the beautification projects. I, I thought that was very important for Darien. But we're in COVID, and it's a little bit different now. So my concern is that somebody's not getting their backyard drainage, for lack of a better example, uh, done this year, but we're putting $21,000 towards a beautification project. I think it's kind of difficult to explain that to someone. Um, is there a possibility that they can put their sign in and this can be done in a later time? All right.
Good question.
I think the cost is going to be more, obviously, to put something in now based on our ordinance with the ground monument signs and landscaping, and then to go back there and remove it.
Well, I, I, I mean, my thought was if Mr. Manos puts a 12-foot by 6-foot sign in there with three feet of it being brick or, you know, a base, we're going to build it, we can, we could do this around an existing sign.
But he's now required, he's now required to build a brick.
Okay, so that would be the problem.
Could, that'd be part of the problem, yes.
Right now, we have Mr. Manos working. John Manos did not need to offer doing the cost share with us. He could have said, "If you want your wall and you want your landscaping, you pay for it." But instead, he said he's willing to share the cost because he's, John Manos came out and said, "I see this as an entryway into the City of Darien." He says, "And I want it enhanced." He says, "So I'm willing to go half on that," which, you know, a, a month or so ago, when we voted on the electronic sign, Alderman Sullivan says, "Maybe Mr. Manos will go with us on a cost share." And at that point, we said, "He has no reason to go with us on a cost share. He's got no motive." Well, the first thing we heard when Dan talked to him was he was willing to go on a cost share. So I, right now, we have a very good business owner in the City of Darien who's willing to enhance a corner at half his cost. He, he doesn't have to do that.
But he's putting up an advertising sign for those businesses. Don't, don't let him fool you.
Sorry, just doing. There is one more issue. You know, the other issue is we have an existing water service that's in the ground there. Part of it is, uh, I'm not sure how far into the parking lot, but by our city code, that water service would have to be removed or terminated. We didn't know what business was going in there at the time, so the, the business that was there, the B-box and the water line stayed. So, um, that is an expense that would either, it would have to be through Manos. It would cost him, you know, probably several thousand dollars to have that removed, and if we had no water service there, it would cost us probably $5,000 to have that water service put in at the same time. So it's a little bit of a calm drum, if you want to say, because that water service would serve not only as part of the water feature for the service of it, but also for the irrigation system. So I just kind of want to put that note in, in there, and it is mentioned in the agenda packet.
Uh, just to clarify, Dan, again, tonight, um, we're looking for direction, so we, you know, we didn't want to spend time, energy, and things. Um, so if, if majority of the council tonight approves what we're asking for, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't recall. This will come back to the council for a formal vote in, was it two weeks?
Yes.
You'll be able to have the iron, ironed out in two weeks. So, again, just so everybody's clear, this is preliminary so we can have, uh, have some direction. The council will have a opportunity to see all the final numbers, pretty much, Dan, the bids.
I think the numbers are pretty solid at the, not to exceed, you know, just with a little more itemization, but that's really the extent of it.
And something formal with John Manos on the cost here, so we just needed a couple of weeks to prepare those things. So we would come back, uh, for formal, uh, review or formal approval.
Any additional, any additional comments? If none, then the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Nay.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
No.
Schauer?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Five ayes and two nay.
Motion is approved. Question, comments, and announcements. Do any of the Aldermen have questions or comments, uh, of the general nature? Alderman Clister?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, last month in June, Brian sent email out, uh, clarifying with regards to, uh, the Facebook post. I had a little concern about, uh, county, uh, elected officials were highlighted, which I don't have any issue with that. The, the concern I had is that, uh, they were highlighted based on purchasing pizza for, uh, the police department, which is great. The concern I had is I've done the same thing for over five years in addition to purchasing pizza for municipal services and city staff. So I felt that, uh, someone came here one time and had the opportunity to be highlighted on our city, uh, Facebook post, which is fine. However, I've done the same thing and never had the opportunity. So that's why the question came out, and I had, uh, a little disappointed that, uh, they were highlighted, and I've done the exact same thing for over five years, and I wasn't given that opportunity. If I declined it, that, that's fine, but I just never had the, uh, the opportunity. So that's where, it wasn't the post itself, it's just I felt as an Alderman for the City of Darien, uh, we were highlighting the county where I've done the exact same thing.
And you got my response?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And in hindsight, I would have not included that. I was out of the office at a meeting, and that came up fairly quick. I would have not in, included that because it was not a, it was not really a county function.
Okay.
If, if we were, if we had a nights out, where a police event and county officials were there, I would certainly, uh, have no problem putting them in. Um, but that, as I mentioned in my email, I would not have done that, and that was put out in error.
Okay.
Um, and, and I would have not have done that, again, I'm, I'm repeating, but because it was not really an official county or township function. It was two individuals that wanted to do something for the police department, and it got carried out very quickly that day in terms of getting on our social media posts, because that's what happens. You don't want to post something two weeks later. So we missed it on the staff, but it got in there and it wouldn't happen, not supposed to happen.
And then the quick other comment I had is that a couple of years ago, we had the, uh, the vote for the warehouse. One of the concerns I had was, uh, safety at Frontage Road and Cass Avenue. When I was out there jogging, I seen a cross was put there, so, uh, someone passed away. Uh, there was a, uh, fatality. I think she was a mom with two kids. So I was thinking maybe even putting a group together with DuPage County and, and really looking at that intersection, because it's only going to get busier. I go there on weekends as a jogger, as a biker, just tons of people over there, which is great. It brings businesses. People go eat lunch or breakfast here. But that intersection is just, it's not safe, and it's not 100% Darien. It's, you know, sort of shared with DuPage County. But yeah, I found out there was a, uh, unfortunate, uh, uh, fatality at the intersection this last month.
Mary?
I just think, um, to address that, Tom, I think that there's a lot more traffic in that area, more so because of, um, all the people going to Waterfall Glen and, um, trying to take advantage of the great outdoors. Um, if there was to be any type of county traffic study, I would love for them also to take a hard look at my side of Darien along, uh, Frontage Road there over by the Carmelites and by the school, because there's, um, sadly, many crosses over there. And, um, a young girl in our community lost her life a few years, life a few years ago by someone just going to church on an early Sunday morning. So I think, um, you know, all of our roads, um, you know, if that, if that, something like that was to be done, probably it should be all-encompassing, not just one specific area.
So, so Tom, Tom and Mary, are you, are you guys saying...
And I believe, Tom, there's, that building's been totally vacant.
It's no one's there.
Until just recently. I think they got their first tenant.
Yeah, you're right. So it's only going to get worse. You're absolutely right. It's only going to get worse, yes.
So you can't attribute that fatality to that building, is all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm. But if you add more traffic, once it does open, it could potentially open.
Before Darien was here in 1969, we had probably zero fatalities. Now you incorporate Darien, you widen the roads. That's true of anything.
No, it's just something that we can, we can improve on. That's our, you know, long-term goal.
Tom and Mary, are you saying that we need to create bike lanes or something like that to improve the, you know, the walking, the biking? Are there bike lan, are there bike lanes over there now?
So there's, there's Claredon Hills technically is what you're supposed to take, but no one takes Claredon Hills. Everyone takes, uh, Cass Avenue. You'll see bikers in the middle going to Waterfall Glen, going to, uh, Argon to work there. So, you know, no, unfortunately, a lot of people don't, don't follow the rules. So I'm not sure what could be improved, but, uh, maybe something we could look at, uh, you know, down the line.
So front, I, I recall Frontage is not an authorized bike trail, I think is what you're asking, right? Yeah, I don't believe that is, right?
No, 91st Street is, yeah.
Yeah.
My side of Frontage Road, you will see packs of bikers in their gear and everything coming along, all the way from west. They, I mean, I, I know people who literally will bike from like Aurora all the way to Darien using, you know, that Route 66, that, uh, uh, North Frontage roadside by me. But, um, I really do believe, um, anyone who drives through, um, Cass Avenue down through Argon, I mean, the traffic flow and the number of people utilizing the forest preserve this year compared to years past is like tenfold. And I'm just throwing that number out randomly. It is, I mean, I've tried to go over there myself and turned around and come home and just use Old Field Oaks over by me that I can physically walk to.
I was going, I was going to Orland Park today at about three, about 3:00 this afternoon, and right there at Bluff in, in Cass, it was, it was, I mean, 3:00 in the afternoon, the cars were lined up all, I thought it was Saturday. I had to look at my, had to look at my calendar, okay?
Well, the forest preserve has literally blocked off parking areas and lots to deter the trap, the number of people coming, because I figure if they can't park their car, they won't be able to stay to walk, because it has been so used and utilized because people are trying to get some outdoor exercise and air. And, um, you know, I think people are just desperate to do something on the great outdoors, um, during these, you know, hard times.
Anything else? Anyone in the audience have anything they wanted to, yeah?
Sylvia?
Alderman McGyver?
No, I didn't hang around just to, you know, just sit there quietly. So, um, I did communicate with the chief. Um, my mom is a recipient of this IDES card. It's very official-looking. It looks like, you know, I mean, like an official credit debit card through a bank. Um, and I, I noted that, um, the chief mentioned that these cards might be diverted to other addresses. So one of the things that I've done, uh, you know, now that there's so much opportunity for scammers to take advantage of people, um, is sign up through the United States Postal Service on their website. You can get what's called informed delivery. And what happens is that anytime, uh, first of all, you get actually, um, pictures of all the mail you're going to receive and a date, packages, whatever. So it's kind of neat. It's in, in an email. But in addition, if someone tries to move your mail to another address, I know a friend of mine got, um, um, her identity compromised, and it was, she found out that that was going on because her mail was being diverted to some, um, address in Florida. So I would recommend residents to look at the USPS website and, uh, sign up for informed delivery. Um, you just get emails, so it's not necessarily any more mail that you're going to get in the, um, you know, in the mail, but it's, it's really handy, so.
Yeah, and to piggyback off of that, you have to put a credit card in, but I think they charge you a dollar, but that's how they verify you. But it's, I, I've had it for a year, and it's, I think it's terrific, so.
Yeah.
How do you go about it, Sylvia?
You go to the United States Postal, you know, USPS website, um, and it's called informed delivery. And you sign up for it, and you put in your email address, and like I said, I just looked at, you know, what I received today. And, and you could also then tell if, say, I don't know, your bank statement didn't show up, because what's sent from the post office to your home, they actually physically, it's a photograph of your mail, each piece of mail. And so that's in the email. So, you know, like, wait a second, you know, I called my bank, and they were supposed to send me this new credit card, and I didn't receive it. You can go back and look and say, "Wait, it didn't get to my house." So you know if somebody's stolen mail or whatever. But it's really handy. It's, it's a nice service that they, they provide. I didn't even know about that until, like I said, my friend's, um, identity was compromised.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
That should be included in direct connect.
There you go.
Yes.
Channel 6.
By the way, Saturday, I got a phone call from, uh, Danny Tischler, and, uh, Danny invited me to join him as well as a number of the Cancer Smashers, the older Cancer Smashers and the younger Cancer Smashers. And we installed four duck houses on different ponds, uh, within the City of Darien. The, we put one out up at Birchwood Park. We put two at Spring Hill, which is over by you on Bel Air. And we put one, uh, over at, uh, by the Costco, that pond over there by the Costco that is the City of Darien. And, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Rob Soracco, who's president of the Darien Park District. He's the chair. And Rob built all these, and the Cancer Smasher kids, uh, helped in the construction as well as the erection of all these, uh, houses. Yours truly just got a chance to stand there and look good in pictures.
I saw it.
But it was, uh, it was fun being with these people today, because they were all these really young kids who are the new generation of Cancer Smashers. And then I always have these high school and college kids who were the older generation of Cancer Smashers. So I wanted to say thank you to Danny Tischler and to Rob Soracco and to the Cancer Smashers for that opportunity. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
I was waiting, I was waiting for your answer.
And I have Sylvia McGyver.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who is the motion?